All its meeting the order. Is Mary Delaney's coming to this part or later?
I told her to come around eight, uh, actually I told her nine o'clock and she said she'll be here around eight o'clock.
Okay, great. So we're gonna start with the hearing. We're starting with the hearing on about the Design Review Board Rules and Regulations. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q on Wednesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, at seven-thirty in the Town Hall, six sixty-three Main Street, Bolton, Massachusetts, to adopt the Design Review Board Rules and Regulations. The Bolton Planning Board reserves the right to adopt these rules and regulations under the Code of the Town of Bolton, two fifty dash twenty-three G, Design Review Criteria. The text of the Design Review Board Rules and Regulations are available for review at the Town Clerk's Office in the Town Hall, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from nine to two-thirty and Tuesday from nine to four. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the Design Review Board Rules and Regulations should appear at the time and place designated. So... The rules and regulations are in front of you.
So I believe at our last meeting, the Planning Board reviewed an older copy of this and basically I just went through and I updated her revised numbering in the code.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, I think that's about it.
So these, did they go through, these don't go through town meeting, right? This is just...
Nope, they didn't. Basically, the Planning Board just has to adopt them.
And we have two different levels of guidelines. You have the bylaws which are adopted by town meeting and they're not under our discretion. They are what they are. I believe ZBA can waive them or overrule them or whatever, but we can't. Then there's the rules and regs which are basically whoever we want it to be. So we can amend them. I think we need a hearing for that, but I mean, we can just vote and amend them at any time. We can waive them because those are purely at our discretion. So that's where these fall under.
Okay.
And I actually have the Massachusetts General out here if you want to read that printed out, which gives the Planning Board that authority to do rules and regulations.
So basically, the idea is that, you know, a... This is for business development. The development, the developer would come to the Planning Board and then we would, you know, we would, we would refer them to the Design Review Board and then the Design Review Board would start working with them. And at the end of that process, they would fill out, I think it's this, that's the application, that they would, they would, they would do a report at the end with their recommendations
Right, exactly.
To what they recommend to the, you know, the Planning Board.
And these fifteen points are the general guidelines. This is, this is generally what they're reviewing during that period. So they get involved pretty close to the beginning of the process?
Which you want them to do, yeah.
Okay, okay. So applicant comes to us with a general discussion, like the first discussion, and then we'll probably pretty promptly refer them to the Design Review Board. They'll go through this, report back, and have a, you know, give a buck and forth.
It basically acts kind of as a working group in conjunction with the developer to make sure that the developer doesn't spend a lot of time spinning no wheels, coming up with designs that ultimately the town won't want to see so that hopefully they can have a meeting of the minds and kind of make real nice thing. So when it comes showtime, work comes between for Planning Board, Conservation Law, the rest, they come in with a sponsor that really fits in the way Bolton would want it to fit in.
Okay. So what's the town's course of action if somewhere along the line they, the developer deviates from this and doesn't take suggestions for the DRB?
Well, um, the DRB is just an advisory.
So if they deviate from the planning board?
You know, they'll give us their opinion and basically we have the authority to take it or leave it. Although, of course, we have, we've charged them with this duty and, you know, we want them to do this. So I think we'd be mostly inclined to take their advice wherever possible.
Well, so what if the DRB comes and says, you know, they didn't listen to us at all? They're doing things that are against, you know, so what can we do as a town?
Well, I think you put it in a special permit as a condition, you know? Like, we require that this lighting plan be blah, 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 that type of thing. It'd be a condition in the permit.
We do have a great deal of oversight about all kinds of nitty-gritty details. Plus, we have enough leeway that for the most part, if they come up with a, a plan that we simply don't like, we can think we have something in there about fitting into the character of the town or some other vague guideline like that. So we could at least in theory reject the application for those sort of...
So just the developer wouldn't be able to open up the business or build whatever?
Build the structure.
Well, you could deny, you could deny the special permit, so...
Yeah, yeah. We don't like this plan, this is the sort of thing that we're looking for, we'd like these aspects changed, please come back.
Yeah, okay. So we could halt the whole thing, so we give them a ten dollar fine, it's like we can halt them.
I don't think we have any ten dollar fine, I don't think we have any finding ability, but...
Well, you know what I mean. I mean, pretty much we don't give the permit and the, you know, the development doesn't happen.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's...
This is commercial, of course, this has nothing to do with residential.
I agree, yep.
You know, the way, you know, the way I think about it is, you know, if somebody is coming into the town, doesn't really know the town and know, you know, how a lot of, you know, how the town thinks about things or feels about, you know, what's valuable or about the abutters and, you know, things like that. So this, the DRB is like the first, you know, they're like ambassadors and they're going to try and explain what all the issues are, who the abutters are, what, you know, what type of privacy needs to be maintained, you know, buffers, materials, the massings of the buildings, things like that. So it feels like it fits in and it's not kind of cookie cutter. Did you come up with, John, any edits?
No, um, this is substantially the same as it's been since the DRB first came up with it. I thought it covered all the bases quite nicely the whole time, so I think all you did was change the numbering scheme.
Pretty much, yeah. I made two minor edits on top of that. I just thought about, originally it said that the Design Review Board adopts these rules and regs, but that's not accurate and it needs to be the Planning Board per the law, so...
And so...
I need that changed.
Just to go back, John, the Planning Board was working on this before I joined, but when Michelle Tuck was still on the Planning Board and...
Actually, it was back years.
So before that?
This, well, it was an idea that was being talked about before I came on in two thousand and five, but it didn't really start taking form until, you know, much more recently.
Did MAPC help us with this or was that just the overlay?
Uh, I don't think MAPC helped us with this. I think this was more so a creation of Michelle and the rest of the DRB.
Great.
And the other, just real quick, minor change that I made. Number five in the Rules and regs where it says the majority of members, that originally said two-thirds majority. Actually, Mary Delaney pointed this out too, because it's such a small board, two-thirds is irrelevant, they just need a majority. So I'm just gonna change that.
Great, so we're gonna open it up to the floor. Any questions or comments? No?
None. They had a big turnout for this.
That's pretty exciting.
It is exciting, it's just not controversial.
I think it's exciting.
It is.
Was it a matter of closing the hearing or is it a matter of making a motion to adopt the...
I think you need to make a motion to adopt, and then you need to slide them.
Is this a motion to, this is a...
This is a public hearing, so we'd have to close that first and then we could do a motion to adopt or not adopt.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll also make a motion to adopt the Design Review Board Rules and regs as summarized before us.
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Right about time, where do we go?
Right at the bottom there, where he just had to put the date, initial it, and...
Just a minute, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, with continuations of hearings, do we have to read all that or we just...
I'll note that you need to recite the whole.
Okay.
The meeting sheet, just say, you know, this is a continuation of a meeting that started on this regarding this.
Okay.
And proceed.
So this is a continuation of a hearing started on April ninth, two thousand and fourteen, with Chuck Black and Campbell Holmes. It's a discussion about driveway and driveway...
Warner Road.
Warner Road. So we continued this because, we continued this hearing because we had the abutters coming in who are concerned about the safety of, um, of a driveway on Warner Road. They were requesting that we consider, we consider changing the driveway to Harvard Road. So at the end, at the end of that meeting, we decided we would consult with the Police Chief, Chief Alfano, and DPDW Director Harold Brown. They went out to the site and they wrote a review. And they wrote a statement. So they went out on Tuesday, April fifteenth, to look at the site.
Did you get a copy of this, Chuck?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Have you sent a copy?
I, uh, printed extra copies.
So what they, you know, they described, you know, what they saw and so their statement is, "Upon review of the site, it is the unanimous opinion and recommendation of both Mr. Brown and myself that the final driveway entrance should be on the Harvard Road side of the lot. We feel that the proposed Warner Road entrance is hazardous both to residents entering and exiting the driveway and the motorists traveling north on Harvard Road who are making the right-hand turn from Harvard Road onto Warner. Due to the embankment, tree line, stone wall, and slope of the hill on the proposed Warner Road driveway, residents exiting the property would need to have their vehicle pulled out partially in the roadway to see, to exit due to obstructed visibility. This would lead them, lead them exposed to vehicle turning onto Warner from Harvard Road whose reaction braking time is limited due to speed visibility and restricted distance. The same concern is true of residents entering the driveway from the Warner Road side who would be highly susceptible to rear-end collision from turning Harvard Road motorists." And it goes on. So, you know, it's a very thorough report. So in conclusion, they're asking the Planning Board and the developer to consider the proposed driveway cut on Warner Road and construct the driveway on the Harvard Road side of the lot. So we can continue, does the Board have any comments or questions about that? Where we open it up?
Well, I drove by it again and I think the distance from the intersection is, I think it's pretty far. The problem is, it's definitely the embankment, because it's like three or four feet high. So, I mean, if they're coming out, you do have to pull out to see around that. If that embankment wasn't there, it was all level to the road, I don't think it would be an issue because I think the distance is far enough away where somebody could slow. But, I don't know, I mean, you'd almost have to take out the entire, you know, the entire embankment, make it level with the road, and then I think it would be fine, I don't know.
So that would be, they'd have to re-agree?
Take off the whole wall.
Re-grade public as well as private.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, because it is, it kind of, kind of from the road, just go up like three or four feet. So you'd be coming out in a normal sedan, I think eye level would be looking at the embankment if you're looking left. So distance-wise, I think it's fine, but it's just the way the land is there.
You're saying if you're coming out of the driveway as it's proposed?
Right, and you're looking left, I mean, it kind of goes up...
It's a road on a hill at that point.
Well, but you have to get to the, I mean, the road is gonna be level and the land goes up above three or four feet.
But you're looking down onto Warner Road. You're in a little bit of a...
Yeah, but I mean, it's gonna, they're gonna have to, you know, level that out. They're not gonna be going down at that angle of the embankment.
And your concern is you're looking at the embankment, it's obstructing some of your vision.
Yeah, so you'd have to really...
Towards Harvard.
Exactly. I mean, is that how, like, what would you do to the land to the left of it? I mean, it is, is it like three or four feet high kind of going up the road? From the road up? I mean, the rock wall is like eye level almost from the road.
We could look at the grades on the plan too, if you'd like, maybe.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address that comment?
Yes.
What I was going to say is, it was just late yesterday that we received an report that you just read, and we forwarded that one to Brandon Duchamp, our engineer. And I spoke to Brandon today and he's going to study the plan, study some of the things you just said. So if it pleases the Board, I'd like to suggest that we give Brent Duchamp, engineer on the job, a chance to review the comments by Mr. Brown and the Police Chief. And then we could better answer the safety and the grading issues at either the next Planning Board meeting or perhaps even the one after that so we have time to let Mr. Duchamp do his work.
So part of that work might be, you know, a redesign showing the driveway on Harvard Road or it's just going to be kind of a rebuttal of finding what the Police Chief and...
I think we would ask him to do both.
Okay.
And again, there's different, you know, issues. If you bring the driveway off Harvard Road, how does the, how does the septic system affect it, the grading? We already have it well installed, you know, we're supposed to be a certain distance away. So again, I think with all due respect to the civil engineer on the job, I think he just got the letter last night. He spent a lot of time designing this. I think we need to give that gentleman the time to do his job and come back and report to us.
I just, you know, I don't, we're not in a rush, so if you want to have continuation after continuation, so, you know, it just might shorten things if, you know, if we get a rebuttal and a revised plan at the same time, you know, just looking ahead, maybe we don't need a continuation, I don't know, after that point, but it'd just be, you know, if you're in a rush. But if you're not, you know, we can keep continuing. Where is the well?
Thank you, I'll stay in the house for a minute.
Okay.
So the well's in, but the septic's not in, but everything has to pretty much be designed around the well location, correct?
Well, again, you know, the septic is shown on the plan, it's, you know, that is the side of the buffer. You know, the septic is, is here. So now if we're talking about a driveway down here, this is grading work and, you know, are we able to keep our distance, you know, away from the well, etc.?
Can you just move the septic further back or the land doesn't work for that?
I can't answer that question, you know? Again, I mean, to be honest with you, I pay an engineer an awful lot of money to do these plans, so for people to just say, well, no, let's throw this plan out, you know? Again, the man's had the plan for twenty-four, I mean, the letter for twenty-four hours or less. I think for us to come in here tonight and say we have all the answers, we don't, so...
I think that's fair, Chuck.
Let's open it up to...
Come, just a quick moment? I mean, to me, it's, it's not an issue of disturbing the stone wall. We find ways to do that, replace the rocks and you do a fine job with it. It's an issue of safety and which entrance is more safe. I was raised on Harvard Road, I lived there in the eighties and the nineties, and it's, it's a highway. It's a fast road, speed limit of forty-five. I was very surprised to see the citation in this letter, the speed limit on Warner was forty. That shocked me. There's maniacs all over the place and some will drive fast anyplace. But generally speaking, making that approach, I've made it a million times over decades, you're not taking that at forty miles an hour. To me, like I said, I grew up on a house that was on a part of Harvard Road that's a very similar profile to this part. It's straight, it's flat, and the speed limit was very fast. It wasn't, it wasn't the safest place for a kid to grow up. To me, if, if safety is the concern, the answer is to put the driveway where you're proposing to put it. I hear your issue with grading and to my eye, if you're up there on a ledge, unless there's a huge embankment to your left really blocking your sight of vision looking towards Harvard Road, I think you're at a superior point, kind of sitting up high and looking out.
They have to dig down. So this is the high point here?
Yep.
They have to dig down so the bank, you know, the bank's there and you're there.
Sure, and you're kind of in the bank.
Yeah, you'll be in the bank.
But to Chuck's point, can, can Brandon design something such that you're not just cutting there, but you're cutting there and, and now there's not obstruction? I can't really visualize it, I'm sure he certainly can.
I think for safety concern, you almost have to take from that point...
I don't think you have to go all the way to the street, I mean, all the way to Harvard Road, but to wide...
A good chunk of, a good chunk of it, though. You probably have to grade it to the, you know, road leveling.
I'm, I'm not the one to really answer that. I can't really visualize it, but I can imagine it's...
So, you know, if you haven't been to the site, it'd be good to go look before our next meeting.
Well, I think it's a good idea to do a little bit more due diligence and get Brandon to strategize a little bit. But to me, sitting here with the facts that we have and my going to the site a few times, I can candidly say where you have it designed, I think that's the safest option, I really do. I mean, the, the, the speed at which traffic will come from Harvard with the speed limit's thirty, past the site with the speed limit had changed to forty-five and everybody's really gassing it up for the, for the straightaway. I wouldn't really want a driveway cutting right there.
I think, I think it's probably less about speed and it's more about visibility, so what...
Okay.
What, what they're saying is a driveway along here, you can pull out and you can see without having to pull in the road. Here, you're gonna have to pull out.
With the foliage and, with the foliage in the hill, you really do have to pull out to your, to your window is past the hill. And you really don't, in the summer, I imagine, you wouldn't see anything coming. Unless that entire thing was graded. If it was all graded out, then I think, I think it's enough distance where somebody could slow down, but I think just the way the land is, I don't think you would see some...
Okay.
So they can grade, you know, their property that it's, you know, they can't re-grade the challenge right away.
So what's the public right-of-way?
It's, uh...
Four feet?
Well, it's here. This is the road line.
Certainly gets us off the center line of the road.
Off the road line, so we do this...
Oh, how many, what, how many feet is that?
It varies.
I don't know.
I mean, that, I mean, it looks like it's a good ten feet.
The right-of-way is defined as a certain distance from the center line of the road depending on what type of road classification it is.
I mean, if they can't touch...
And just about every road in Bolton is considered a variable width road and effectively all of that information exists only in Harold Brown's head.
It's forty.
No, they're, that's like these, those concrete markers, the concrete markers.
Actually, lost in fire.
But...
It's twenty.
I think they mentioned seeing the concrete markers, but...
That's twenty to forty feet, then, I mean, they would have to get a variance for the town to do it?
At that point. So that would be lifting up the stone walls, kind of all the trees.
Yeah, that's what I think would have to be done.
That would be a big deal.
I think, um...
Well, let's listen to, we have abutters who were here last time. Can you identify yourself?
We're just in Deacon on eleven Devlin Hill Road, the yellow house right behind. The only thing I had to say as far as the safety goes is that, again, I think I wrote it in a letter to you that we have an easement with the drainage that's on our property and it has, right now, you can't see it because it's not filled in, but it has very thick, I mean, when they had, we were the second owners, so when they had this planted, it's a beautiful job done of hiding the drainage area. So when all of that comes in, it's very thick. Matter of fact, I actually, in the town area on the other side of that, you get a lot of ferns, wild ferns and all that grow very high. And I actually have a guy that takes care of my yard, that I have him to go over to that little area and to cut it back because as you're coming out of Drummond Hill onto Warner, you can't see anything coming from that direction. So I actually, whenever he takes care of my yard, I actually have him to go out and cut that back for the safety of everyone leaving Drummond Hill. So again, you know, it's just, you know, my thing is the safety with it. Just, just the fact that it really, when that fills in, it, it will be very difficult to see. And when you have a, they don't always maintain Warner Road. It's like one of the last roads to be maintained, really. You have a lot of ice buildup in that section because it's so shaded in, right through there. And if you do, it's easy to slide. So if you get someone that's going a little too fast or something and someone's pulling out, they're gonna slide, if, if their driveway is angled downwards and they slide right down, trust me, I know, I literally through the literature, I know how you slide right down a driveway and your car doesn't stop and it goes right in and someone's coming. So, I mean, the only thing I can say is, you know, you have to think, is it preventing the accidents that could be on down that's gonna keep the police very busy? And EMTs and any of the services like that, very busy? Is that something that's gonna be a potential? And, I mean, I kind of feel that it will be a potential because I, you know, lived on there a couple, a couple of years now just because I know that area now. I think there is a potential for an issue with the driveway. And if you did the grading as suggested, then basically that's taken it all the way down to Harvard Road. And I just, you know, I, I look at Harvard Road and to me, it's just a straight, you know, it is a straightaway. It doesn't start curving further down to way on down the road. By then, you're gonna see people coming. I guess that's really hard, and, and thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I just wanna, I have noticed that it's a retention basin, it's right about there and it is surrounded with evergreens.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think, you know, you're correct, saying it's very dense on that side.
We have the tall grass that will grow in, that goes very high, that comes in during this, uh... this, uh, later spring in summer season, all the way to the fall, so...
Any other comments?
I do have one.
Can you identify for yourself?
I guess I'm at the Polleridge, thirty-six Warner Road, I'm not in a Butters, I'm further down the road. I'm actually the last house on the left prior to entering our, our apartment. Um, I guess I'm still caught up on the fact that there's only forty-two scenic roads and Harvard Road is not one of them in the town. It's not on our, at least it's not on the website as being part of the scenic roads for the town.
Yeah, no, it's not a scenic road because it's either a county road or a state road, and those can't be scenic roads, it has to be a town, a town road.
And I just, I guess now especially hearing that we would possibly consider grading the whole thing and taking all the trees down, it just, it does not make sense to me.
I think that's unlikely.
The, the other, okay.
I, I was just, I mean, we don't know that yet. I was just saying, if you were to do it, I feel like that's what you would have to do.
Because I even, at the last meeting, showed that the depth, the height difference is huge.
Yeah.
Um, the other concern I have is, the road's not very wide, so if someone is coming up around, there's nowhere, there's nowhere to go with your car. You'd have to go into the embankment on the other side to not hit someone, and if there's a walker on top of it or a jogger, and that road has a lot of bicyclists, it, it, you're setting yourself up. And the other concern I guess I have after reading this is, I wonder what, if we decided to move forward and we did allow it, after two department heads have said this is a concern, and is this now a liability risk for the town if we approve it and someone then gets hit or killed? Could they go to, you know, the state, if I pass Bolton law, never mind suing Bolton, but go to, you know, state and say, now get involved, Mass General Law?
Anyone can sue anyone for any reason, it doesn't make the town liable, though.
But wouldn't this almost give them...
No.
The ability to say, you had two department heads who said that it was a risk...
Allows them to make an argument, it doesn't allow them to necessarily make a winning argument.
Okay, so, um, I just would think it'd be kind of a concern, but not, and to be honest with you, I wouldn't want the town to be sued, so I guess I'm just very concerned that it could be a potential obvious opportunity for a lawsuit, so... But other than that, I just, I think it's just the width of the road as well, and I would hate to see the road dismantled like that. So thank you.
So, oh, the grading, you're talking about the grading, in terms of dismantling?
And the trees coming down?
Yeah.
I mean, because there, all the trees would have to come down, because there's especially one tree right by the post that's closest to Harvard Road that would definitely have to come down, and that one tree has already been taken down.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that's just an idea that was kind of discussed, I don't know how serious.
Oh, no, yeah, I think it's...
We'll see what Brandon comes back with.
Everything's, everything's brought to the table.
So, did you have, no? Anything else? So, um, we need a motion to continue this?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion to continue.
Are we looking for the next meeting or the one after? Well, just put it on for the next meeting, and if that's no good, then we'll just bump it back?
That'd be fine, thank you.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to continue this hearing, um, to a future...
So can we name the date and time, so that way?
Okay.
I don't necessarily have to post it.
Okay.
So, May fourteenth, and, uh, we already have a public hearing scheduled for seven thirty, so this would be scheduled for seven forty-five.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing to May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, at or around seven forty-five P.M.
Second it?
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against?
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time.
So, uh, our next item is a request for reduction or waiver of street acceptance fee for Northwoods. We have Chuck Black here again, and... Chuck Black from the studio house, goodness.
Starting with us, without...
Chuck, did you want to say anything more about, just, say anything more about this?
I think that, um, we had discussed it fairly thoroughly last meeting, and I think that my wife and I, Kendall Holmes, I think that simplistically, um, we feel and believe that we ended up finishing this project during a very severe housing recession, and during that time, our partner that was supposed to share in the cost of finishing the roads went bankrupt, so Kendall Holmes and Gina, Gina and I have had to step in and finish it. And we've done that, and so, um, I think the last meeting, we asked this board to consider a fifty percent reduction in the road acceptance fee.
So, uh, can you just refresh everybody here and at home? The fee is twelve thousand?
Yeah, so basically, um, the length of road is four thousand one hundred and thirty feet, it's three dollars a foot, so it came out to be twelve thousand three hundred and ninety dollars in total.
Okay, and so this, this fee has been in place since nineteen ninety-one?
Versions of this fee, so, um, it was put in place, I don't know if it was before nineteen ninety-one, but in nineteen ninety-one, it was fifteen hundred dollars or three dollars per linear foot. In two thousand and ten, the fifteen hundred dollars was increased to sixteen fifty, but the three dollars remained, so...
And, so, so this was in place, and you, you knew about this fee when you started the project?
The actual fact is, we did not know about the fee, and the reason is that this subdivision was, um, owned by Larry Duchan, and Harold Brown was a part owner as well. So Kendall Holmes did not go through the approval process with the planning board. It was...
Right, so you bought, you bought out...
I bought and approved subdivision, or paper road, if you will, from Larry Duchan and any of his partners. And when I bought that, it was, you know, I never knew, it was never disclosed that, by the way, when you're all done, Chuck, you gotta pay this fee.
Well, I think, I think the big picture here is, you know, we're going for its town meeting, and you want to get this road accepted.
That is correct.
That's, that's really the goal. You know, it's the goal in terms of, you know, Fred, or the town engineers report, the last, you know, little checkoff items, and this fee, and, you know, so, I mean, I think that's really what you want, is to get the road approved, and that's kind of the last, you know, once that's approved, you're, you're pretty much free, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the project's completely finished and you're, you know, the town owns it, so I just, I just think, you know, in terms of this discussion, it's important for everyone, um, to keep an eye on that, and that's the important thing, and I think everybody wants that.
I agree with that.
Chuck, did you want to go through the inspection list like we did with Donna this morning, just because the planning board isn't privy of that information?
Well, we certainly can, we certainly, we certainly can, but I don't know if, I mean, I'll do it whatever way pleases the board.
Sure.
But I don't know that one issue is tied to the other. It would seem to me that the members of this board, of which, we have one absent, but the members of this board, you know, each have their own opinion as to what should be done or shouldn't be done.
So, uh, you have La, did Doug write something for us to read?
Yes, and I sent it in the packets, you may want to read that out loud.
Okay, so you're referring to our, you know, we're missing more than, Doug isn't here, and also James Owen, I was saying...
Okay, oh yeah, that's true, I apologize for that.
And, uh, it turns out last meeting was Doug's, our last meeting was Doug's last meeting.
Okay.
Um, he skipped out on us. We were really hoping to like bring something to eat and drink and say goodbye, but, uh, that's the way he wanted to do it.
No, no fancy.
He's a cool guy.
Yeah.
He doesn't like the sentiments, but, um, so... This is what, I mean, he's kind of responding, like, it's this top part?
He's responding to an email, the research I did in terms of the fee history for the town, that kind of thing, he's responding to an email.
So Doug writes, this is what I recall, they felt the road fee was excessive and they paid half and we accepted it without any further debate.
They being the Oaks.
The, and...
He's talking about the Oaks. Is that what you came up with? Because I thought you were...
That's the, based on the hard copy trail I could find, they paid half.
Well, just, um...
But they all...
Kind of anything, no?
Honestly, I think we kind of looked the other way, so to speak, because we felt they had paid a lot. At the end of the day, we are giving a completed road to the town and paying the town to take it. They are giving a completed road to the town and paying the town to take it, think about that. Since I won't be at the meeting, I'm registering my support for accepting what they're offering. I do think you can accept it without making a big deal about it, and in essence, do what the prior board did before, so there's not a new precedent. So I won't be at the meeting, you're not obligated to count my vote, I just wanted to register my perspective with you. Good luck, best, Doug.
Last point, what do you think, email?
Um, so, when you were, when you were...
Let's keep sending them emails.
When you were, in your research, the Oaks, there were a lot of fees that you couldn't kind of tease out.
I couldn't pinpoint if, basically, the Oaks paid several, um, fees around town meeting, but only one of, one of those turnovers actually had a description that said street acceptance, so I don't know for sure whether or not they paid the full amount, I just know they at least paid half, based on what I could find.
I mean, looking at these amounts, so this is six thousand, then the other three, there's like eight thousand, so that would be over the amount, there's a seven thousand, so that would be over the amount, maybe the three thousand, but...
Yeah, it, the Oaks is a sort of a special project because we had a lot of issues with street acceptance on that one. Um, the developer never reserved the right of the road, so when it came...
For the residents, so then when it came time for the road acceptance, uh, there was a very long chasing, basically, of, I think it was two or maybe just one resident who was like, I don't want to sign over, and, you know, what's in it for me? Kind of situation that went on and on and on and on.
So the residents sort of owned the road?
Yes, because they didn't reserve it when they originally sold the lots.
I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, based on all the information we've seen, comparable towns, um, and our fee is definitely a lot more than any other town, I mean, I'm inclined to think that, and, and Doug also said that the intent is to pay for the review of the road, sort of. I mean, it's, I, I, it seems like our fee is too high, basically, looking at comparable towns and stuff, I mean, and I don't know the process of this, but it seems like the Oaks was twelve, about twelve thousand, they paid six, and they're suggesting half, I mean, could we change that three dollars per linear foot to a dollar fifty and then...
So, you know, so we're in this, you know, the climate we're in now is, you know, there's, there are many vocal people who are upset about, you know, Bolton's tax rate, and, um, you know, there, that could be members of this board as well, who are concerned about, you know, our taxes, and so, you know, if you're concerned about taxes, you'd be, you know, really concerned about waiving fees like this. Um, I, I, the way I see it, it's not just kind of Erica or the planning board itemizing their time, it's, you know, I think, well, there was a time in Bolton where there was, you know, a person would buy a lot and build a house, and we didn't need a planning, we didn't need, you know, a, a town planner, we didn't need a conservation director, we didn't need a town administrator, but then these huge developments came in, very complex with phosphor, and so you needed, you needed, you know, you couldn't just do it with volunteers help, you really needed people who were paid full-time, uh, like we have now, and so you have to think over, you know, what is it, eight years? With Northwoods, all the, you know, all of the time of the conservation director, the, the town planner, uh, the town administrator, all of those people getting involved, Harold going for site visits, things like that that aren't covered, um, by fees, and then, you know, just heating and electricity of the building for our meetings and just town meeting, you know, to vote to accept the road, all of those things, you know, I think, so it's not just, you know, just looking at the planning board, the town planner's time, I think it's like the whole apparatus of town government that, you know, that is needed, because, you know, we can't do it with just volunteers anymore with projects this big.
I don't know, six, six grand or so is really a worthwhile road for anyone to pursue when it's about twelve million a year going to the schools and the better part of one million on the docket, this town meeting for various vehicles for various departments.
And I mean, like, how many of these developments, so there's, you know, like, what, three, four, or five of these developments currently?
Well, we have, so we have Century Mill coming up, so, so we, we decide, you know, we decide that, uh, you know, we're, you know, we're sympathetic to builders and their hard luck stories, and we're gonna, you know, so Andy's gonna come in and say, you did it for Chuck, and he's gonna come in with his own hard luck story, you know, so... I know, in terms of our budget and the planning board, yeah, it, this, you know, twelve thousand's a small amount compared to millions, but when you come in here and meet with the advisory board and the board of selectmen and go through the budget, you know, they're cutting a hundred dollar here and a hundred dollar there, they're very, you know, tight, so, you know, you've probably seen those meetings, but, um, you know, so they're cutting these little slivers for the planning board for, you know, Erica's budget, um, but...
I, I guess my question is, I mean, you know, compared to what we've seen, it seems kind of excessive compared to other towns. I mean, do we feel like we need to reevaluate the three dollars per foot, like, two dollars per foot, or do you think it's right?
Actually provide a liquid strategy for, um, future builders' concerns, so, you know, we look at the situation and if we decide that, okay, the full fee is excessive, the next one to come down the line to say, well, you did that for, for Chuck, why don't you do it for me? And we can say, well, we did realize that it was excessive and we changed it to be more reasonable, so that precedent is under the old excessive fee regime, now we're under a reasonable fee regime and this is what it is. So whatever precedents may have come in the past, that's under basically a different set of rules.
So that process, if we were to vote on changing the fee, would that...
Would be separate from this, although clearly inspired by this.
Right. Um, that wouldn't be, that would just be a plan, just like the rules and regulations, just we vote on it?
That might be board of selectmen, I can look into that.
I mean, I, I mean, if we were to do something with, with, with...
It's just us, but...
Okay, because at some point, I think, um, the planning board looked at revising fee schedule in two thousand and eleven, it was rejected, so I don't, I don't know why it was rejected or who rejected it, but, um, so I'll, I'll look into it.
I remember this coming up before, just the fee schedule in general, but...
Yeah.
I don't have any recollection of changing it or rejecting it or whatever.
I mean, so, so I guess my overall opinion is, it seems excessive, um, I'm not as comfortable just...
Where, where are we getting the, the excessive part from?
Just based on what's, you know, the other, you would send in emails of different, different towns, I don't know that you have all the links here, but...
Why did you come up with that? Because I didn't see that.
So, um, basically, there's a printout in your packet. So the town estow requires that a developer pay to the town the recording of instruments and deeds in an amount determined by town council, so that's very vague, I don't know what that would be.
Well, you, you had attachments in your email for like Hoppington and...
Yeah, that's, that's here, I included it in this, in this Word file. So Hoppington, basically, I put out the question onto Mass Planners.
Yeah.
It's basically a blog for planners in Massachusetts, and I got a couple of responses. Hoppington said they don't have a street acceptance fee midway.
So I saw that, but I mean, is it apples to oranges? Do they have another fee that you weren't really asking about, you know, is there...
That, that, possibly.
Yeah.
I mean...
So they could have fees that are part of the development?
Right, exactly, it's something in... Right, exactly. Something included. Yeah, that's, that's why it was, you know...
I mean, I could, I could go online and pull as many fee schedules as I, as I could, we could compare it that way. But generally, towns have similar fees, you know, preliminary, definitive.
Yeah. So I guess it's two things, I guess, you know, yeah, so my point was, you know, I feel like maybe it's excessive, but I'm not comfortable just like picking and choosing, okay, this is good for you, this is good for you, I'd like to, if we think it's excessive, adjust the fee. I guess, you know, and then maybe, I don't know, like, timing wise and process wise, how that would really work, but...
I just think, you know, fees and taxes, you know, I think, I think it's important to think about, you know, this isn't a business in town that's asking for a break because they're part of the community. Or this, and I, and I doubt we even like grant those. And this isn't a homeowner, you know, saying, you know, "Can you waive the fee?" And I doubt those fees and taxes are ever waived, like, you know, we pay a lot.
Like dog, dog fee or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, I don't want to reg, pay fifty-five dollars to register my car this year, I'd like to pay twenty-five. So, you know, I, I just, you know, thinking about it that way, I don't think, I don't think people are asking for waivers for those fees. People who are actually in town, um, you know...
Would it work if I did?
I don't think it would.
Do you feel like we should tie this request to a fee adjustment or we should just...
I don't know if we need to adjust our fees, I mean, would, I mean, if you adjust your fees, what does that do in the future? You're trying to make it cheaper to, for builders to build developments, but then, you know, we have to maintain the road and we have to pay for the planning and the conservation commission.
Well, maintaining the road is arguably part of the taxes, you know, that the houses on the road pay.
But it's to Jonathan's point, it's all, it's all revenue, it's a bucket of revenue. I, I'm troubled by it because it, I think Chuck did a great job developing the property.
Yeah, it's a beautiful development.
I, I think you read through this punch list and it disturbs me. I, I drove around and I think we're, I think there's a lot of nitpicking there. Uh, I think the road is in very nice shape, I think there's a couple of those items that, that can be addressed.
Well, we can go through that later because it sounds like they've worked that out very amicably, right?
I think so.
I think so, yes.
You know, that's the starting punch list.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's been ironed out.
Okay, okay. I mean, if we have a standard, whether it is too high or not, and I see enough evidence to, to give me a good feeling as to whether it is an excessive fee or not, if three bucks is, is too much. To your point, it's, it's a source of revenue, we have a problem in town with not raising enough revenue.
Yeah, so towns that cut all their fees, they want, they want, they cut all their fees and regulations because they want the town to like explode.
Right, right, exactly.
Like, do we, do we want the town to explode or like, do we want to be careful?
This is roughly six grand over the course of a many-year development. This is literally a drop in the bucket of whatever was expended.
But drops, drops fill the bucket, and it's, it's a precedent that you...
It's not gonna be a make or break of, well, do I make the development or do I not make the development?
No, but my, my decision on this topic isn't due to this topic. I mean, it's, it's, are we getting in a practice, do we want to get into a practice of applying discretion? We should have rules and regs, if we don't like them, we should change them. And if they are transparent rules and regs, I, I think we need to keep, I'm troubled because, uh, I'd like to accept the road. I'd like the town to be happy, I'd like Chuck to be able to move on to his next project, I think he did the right thing. I think to Doug's point, um, when once Parter goes belly up, you certainly could walk away and would be left in a, in a bad situation. That's not necessarily sympathizing and saying that, but we should, uh, we should, we should compensate those for finishing it. I mean, it's, it's also your job to finish it, but there's, it's a lot of sides to this and I, I definitely am. I think I come down on, uh, a little bit regretfully, I'm not psyched to say it, but I think I come down on, the fee is the fee and if that's our schedule until and unless we change the schedule. Tough for me to support cutting the fee back.
As far as you have, I mean.
Yep.
Last meeting, Jim and I brought in fifty percent fee in good faith. We said at that meeting, if the board is not open to a reduction, we'll bring in the other fifty percent. So at this point, if it pleases the board, next week we'll bring in another check for what we've already given the town and, and the discussion.
I think that would be great in terms of, in terms of, you know, town meeting and, you know, looking at the big picture, you know, getting all the votes, it's a two-thirds, you need two-thirds. And, you know, I just hate for, you know, for you not to get that. I think everybody's ready, all the residents.
I echo that all day long. I'd be very, very disappointed in the town if this, if this doesn't...
I would, I mean, we would maybe give fuel to some people's buyer.
Right.
I'm just saying, I'm saying, if, if, there would be no reason to unless like, you know, you cut a fee, but even still...
Yeah, no, I mean, Chuck, it is a beautiful development. You saved a lot of trees and you set the houses into the forest. Um, you know, it's a beautiful development, you did do a great job. And so I don't want to take that away from you. You added something really nice to Bolton and, you know, the people who were there, I think they're very happy.
Yeah.
You know, we walked through it, it's a very pleasant place to live, so, thank you for that.
So thank you. So do we want to, Erica, go over this list?
The planning board like to go over the list?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I met with Fred and Erica on site. These are the things we noticed together, it might seem nitpicky, but, you know, this is, that's Fred's job. Let's go, you know, review it for the town, get his stamp, so that, you know, going for its town meeting, everybody's like...
Can I just ask a question before you get into it? What would, um, like, the center island, whether it was dirt or grass, I mean, how does it affect the road? Why do we care about this landscape?
The plan is the plan, it's, it's within the road right of way.
We pay or maintain it. It's, it's, it's the island in the middle of the circle, so the town is owning that.
Not beated by homeowners.
So if it's a weedy mess and we accept it, then the neighborhoods call up and say, "Can you take care of this?" So it'd just be nice at acceptance that it's mulch and planted away.
So that's my question.
Yeah.
Islands or, you know, whatever, circles in the middle are town-owned, not...
Anything within that road right of way.
Yeah, okay.
And so that, you'd say it's nitpicky, the grass on the side of the road.
Yeah.
But as soon as we accept that and the neighbors say, "Hey, the grass isn't coming out."
What about Oaks?
"Can you come out and do that?"
And the only reason I say it's nitpicky is because some of these, if those residents said, "Harold, could you do it?" I would say, "Why aren't they doing it on my street?" I mean, some of them are, guys, what do we want here?
I'm not, you know, it really stands out in a new development with the new...
The potter scrapes across the front of my lawn from when they go down the road a little too far over?
Yeah.
Stuff like that?
Yeah.
A little bit too far over? Well, it's probably... My mailbox survived the season this time. What about, what about?
That's my point.
What about the sand like ten feet into the yard?
Yes, so we...
That you need to rake, rake out yourself.
But I just, I, I agree. Erica, you can take us through this and tell us what the compromises were. We met with Chuck and Don and...
Yep, and we've had way in from Fred Hamway on this list. So number one, uh, the strip of land between the road and sidewalk for the first thirty-five feet on the roadside of Drummond Hill Road. Chuck has agreed to loam and seed this area.
Tomorrow.
Okay. Number two, the grass area behind the curb along Fieldstone Way has been planted in a questionable loam material. The area should be spread with screened loam and seeded, um, and he'll also take care of that.
Tomorrow.
Um, so we've sort of already discussed the center island and basically, I think everyone is okay with that landscape area. It's mulch and plants. Number four, remove the shrub between the four bay and the detention basin at the end of Fieldstone Way.
So that's just like a big bush that's growing up on a dam between detention basins?
This is after the cul-de-sac, this is at the very end of the driveway past the white fence? Okay, all right.
That, that was done last week.
That's great. I thought, it's just, I'm sure it sounds nitpicky to David, but you don't want trees growing on your dams.
I, I, I agree, that was not my nitpicky one.
It was right next to, um, there was a stand pipe and you don't want the tree roots to be getting and cracking that stand pipe. That was really the big issue there.
That was done last week.
Um, number five, install a grate over the allot structure in the detention basin at the end of Fieldstone Way, you had ordered that?
Yeah, we had, actually had a pipe manufactured, I saw the pipe, I picked it up from the supplier today and it will be installed tomorrow.
So that's a vertical pipe that has an opening and it was just open, so it's an animal, a capey form?
Okay, okay.
Removed by two minutes particles that were scraped off the curb during snowplow operations and I think that's already been done.
That's already been done.
Repair all tire ruts behind the curb throughout the site and I...
Actually, I have a question I'd like to...
That will be done tomorrow.
I, I had read that wrong at first and I, I read it as tire ruts in the curb, but this is like when I'm coming up my driveway in the winter and I'm not paying attention, I run over my lawn, so it, that's what, what's he dealing with, right?
I think what actually happened is when the roads were plowed, um, the plow truck might have, you know, a bad storm gone over the curb a bit, left a tire rut. Anyways, it's, it's minimal work, you know. My guy told me all of the work to fix the loam and seed is about one yard of loam. So, uh, anyways, I gave him seed and fertilizer today, he's picking up like the apple home, and that'll be done tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, number eight, the center island in the cul-de-sac of Ledgewood Drive has not been landscaped.
And so that item there, um, on Ledgewood, um, the people that own the house at the very end of the street.
Dorus, Ted.
Yes, Ted, Linda Dorus. I had done most of the work in the fall, but it was too late to seed it. So Ted said to me, you know, "Just loam, just spread some loam, seed it, he'll maintain it." So again, tomorrow we're gonna put some screened loam, seed it, and rather than the town having to maintain it, Ted will. So.
Number nine, loam and seed around all bounds, so that'll be done tomorrow.
So those are the markers?
Yep.
The concrete markers.
Number ten, loam and seed along the cistern pad between the adjacent driveways and that'll be done tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Uh, remove leaves and the inlet depressions off of Drummond Hill Road pavement. Did you...
I, I don't know what that is, but I gave this, I gave this to the fellow that's going out there tomorrow. So he'll look, and again, at least for what you said, it's very minor.
It's minor, yeah.
If when you go out next week, if for some reason we miss it, we'll take care of it.
Okay. Number twelve, all pavement shall be swept clean.
All done.
Yeah, great, it's done.
Uh, number thirteen, flush all drain lines, catch basins to manholes, manholes to detention basins.
So when we were out there with Harold Brown last fall and Mr. Hamway, Harold said to Fred, he said, "Fred, the drainage system is clean as a whistle because there's been rags in the catch basins the entire time." So, um, there is not, they're clean. And obviously, we've had rain, we've had proper drainage. The whole idea of watching the roads for the winter was to see how the drainage worked and there are no issues.
And I also followed up with Harold on that point and he said the same thing. He said, you know, "The cul-de-sacs were removed in the fall, it's, they're fine," so...
So if anybody watching at home lives in North Woods, you know, and if you've noticed something about the drainage, let us know. But it, it does look clean, but, uh, that's kind of, what we don't see is what's underground in terms of pipes and clogs.
So number fourteen, the bollards in front of the cistern are shown to be four foot on center on the plan. The bollards are spaced at various intervals. Now I provided a letter from the fire department in your packet and they signed off on those bollard locations. So I think that puts this issue to bed.
Should I read it or no need?
Uh, you want to.
Uh, dated January eleven fourteen, "From John Mencer to the Bolton Planning Board. Bolton Fire Department has inspected and paved turnout areas and protected bollards that have been recently added to the whole road cistern. Work is my completed satisfaction. Fire Department cistern is now complete, fully functional. Fire Department continue periodically inspect and test the cistern for proper operation and will provide the board final staffs report and recommendation for the cistern prior to town meeting vote to accept Drummond Hill Road as the town road." That's what John Mencer.
Number fifteen, the guardrail along Ledgewood Drive does not extend to the length shown on the plan.
So could it go one more length further towards the boulder and prevent a little bit of safety concerns? Maybe, but it didn't jump out at me as a huge concern, that's just my opinion.
So you're saying we approve good for the planning?
That's, that's what Chuck said in rebuttal, that we remember the planning board approving it.
And my rec, and my memory, and it's been installed for quite a few years, my memory is that we specifically discussed what length it was gonna be. And when Brandon Duchamp got this most report, he emailed me right away, he said, "Chuck, the planning board approved what you installed years ago." I don't have documentation of that, but that's what Brandon said. And I seem to remember, cause it was conservation in that area, I think Carol might have been involved as well, but...
What's down past that white fence, just one house?
So is that the, is that the, sorry?
It's the same, it's what I was talking about before.
Where there's no sidewalk?
No.
There is no sidewalk, yeah.
There is no sidewalk, it's the very, very end of the development. It's the same thing where you said the bush was just cut down.
Yeah.
It's right before that, but coming by that bend. I think there's just one house. Not to belabor the, the, the report, but can we get any from that resident if, if they think that's a concern?
What's the, is there a grade change there?
I, I don't know, I have to, well, I'm just... Yeah, no, I, I didn't go over to take a look at that. Um, I'm just wondering if we should be looking at the as-built plans, see if the guardrails were shown on that because the planning board already approved them, so essentially that would be approving the guardrail. Unless you disagree with that.
No, I think that's smart. This is really a question I think, but...
The other, the other thing that, you know, I think we all agreed previously is that in the fall, Mr. Hamway said, "The paving job looks great, everything looks great." And the whole idea of holding the bond was to make sure the road's held up during the winter drainage work. It wasn't to come out and make another inspection and raise other issues. Again, this guardrail's not new, it was there when he was there in the fall for many seasons. And...
Still holding any bonds or anything like that for you at this point?
Yes, you have about eighty-two hundred dollars held in the bond. And if it pleases the board, number sixteen, I order the additional stop signs today. And Dawn and Erica agreed that the little bit that's left here, it would be not necessary to have Mr. Hamway go out. Erica is gonna go out next week to do her own inspection.
Great, great.
No, that two hundred is for the roadway, to making sure that we, you get everything just so correct. So as soon as this road is accepted, there's no reason to hold on to it, correct?
That would be my opinion.
I think that's the way it goes.
And, and I do, you know, I'm not opposed to saying if for some reason come May fifth, I don't have these last three stop signs in, then, you know, if there's, it still has to be one more step, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, let's get them in. I don't want any excuses for not accepting.
Well, this comes after the American marijuana discussion, so we're pretty spent by the time we get to this.
And I'm okay.
Really? I don't need to go that far back.
But before all the revenue.
Yes, but don't worry, there's, there's two nights reserved. Yeah, you sleep over.
We're worried that, because there's two weeks reserved.
Before the five hundred thousand dollar fire truck comes.
Oh, okay.
About a quarter million dollar ambulance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just like, hey, where, where?
Something to be...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this shows guardrail, it's not labeled, but you guys... Yeah, I'm pretty sure this shows guardrail. It's not labeled, but you guys can take a look and see what you think.
So these are the sign that's.
You did a sign as well.
His signature's around now. Yeah, just if we, we'll see if John remembers.
What?
So I'm just, I'm just wondering if this line here is the guardrail or if those are just grade lines?
What is the grade change? What makes, what is the guardrail?
It drops off. You're coming around a bend. It's essentially a, I think a driveway for just one house. You're coming around a bend, uh, it drops off.
You have the detention basin there, so because there's a grade change there, um.
So we could drive into.
Yeah, and I think when I remember correctly now, a dozen years ago, we had to plant maybe thirty trees for conservation. And when we did that planting, it was clear that the grade up, it was at the very end of Ledgewood, was, there was no drop there. So we talked to Carol. We said, yes, we planted all the trees. There isn't a need for this guardrail to go any longer than what safety determines. And that's what we approved. And I remember ordering the pots and we had a crew come in on a Saturday and I ordered specifically the amount of guardrail I needed that was approved, so.
So this was the part of Fred's walk that.
That we missed, yeah.
Early, so we had to get back here for a meeting. Um, so. Wait, Eric, if you could, uh.
So where are the, we'll call it missing guardrail, uh, would be there are a bunch of trees planted?
That is correct.
So effectively you have a natural guardrail up in place?
That is correct, yes. And and the conservation, my memory says we originally had a six thousand dollar cash bond to make sure we planted the trees and that they survived one to two growing seasons. And now the trees are seven or eight years old, so.
So is this the same cul-de-sac where you, conservation or mobility group said, we don't need a sidewalk here, just give us four thousand dollars? Is this the same cul-de-sac? So if you could just ask Carol about that and just.
Sure, so can I do a little more?
Sounds like it's not a big deal. Um, are we?
Oh, sorry. Uh, let's see if there's any more. There's just one more and it's a stop sign.
Yeah, Chuck.
Uh, four stop signs are shown on the plan. Only one sign has been installed on the street sign post at Drummond Hill Road and Warren Road. This sign appears to be installed to go on the street sign post and should be installed on its own post. And Chuck wrote, uh, the stop, the stop sign has been approved by the planning board and Harold Brown. Stop signs installed per police chief.
And I just represented to the board and I had sent you an email beforehand tonight. I today, half, late today, I ordered three more stop signs and three more posts, so in the three locations. And actually, you could do me a favor and let me know specifically where those would be installed.
Sure.
And if I can get those signs in time, I'll put them in next week, so when you come by, you can say yes to it.
Sure.
Great.
And I agreed to do a final site visit actually, just to bear in mind these items.
Great, so, um, you need to vote?
Um, I don't think so.
Do we do that?
Cause he agreed to pave the, the, the inf.
Um, so just in terms of town meeting, what is the?
Oh, for this, we voted on.
Yeah, vote to recommend. Did you really do that?
We did that at last meeting.
I don't, if you did, I don't know if we were here.
Uh, yeah, we might. It was at the end of the meeting, yeah, we missed it, but.
Would it be redundant to put it on record again?
Um, I.
Let me just check my meeting minutes real quick, cause I'm, I'm ninety-nine percent certain that they already voted.
I'm sure it was unanimous.
Yes, Article 19 accepted sub Drummond Hill Road, Ledgewood Circle and Fieldstone Way. Duck Story motion to approve and endorse Article 19 to be passed at town meeting, seconded by David Yazaway. All in favor, five.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Ah, sorry, we're running late, Mary.
No, the best case, you told me to hear it nine, so I just got here early in case.
Oh, good.
Hold you up if.
Kinda glad we didn't have to make a decision on that one.
Mary, you wanna come join us up here at the.
I'm exactly on the pre-schedule tonight anyways, this is the last meeting before town meeting, so.
Yeah.
Hi, it's nice to meet you too, before you know it. Yeah, no problem.
I'm glad we just didn't have to make a decision tonight, else it'd be a problem.
So we have Mary Delaney here. She's interested in joining the design review board.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Just, uh, some, some of us don't know you and tell us about it.
Hi, Mary. Um, I am a, uh, right, well, right now I'm a marketing person at Fruitlands Museum and the marketing manager there, but I was an interior design major in college and I love architecture and I know a little bit about it and I love especially historic homes and historic architecture. So I thought, I was asked if I would be interested in being on the design review board and I would love to do it. So I don't have a degree, I have a degree in graphic, I mean, interior design, but I'm not, uh, was looking at your list of what you have to be to be on it and I'm not.
Volunteer?
Yeah, I'm a volunteer.
I'm a warm body, yes. It gives examples of what they would look for.
Okay.
But it, I don't think that's the, the exact purpose, so, yeah. I know you guys want to get it.
Are you any relation to our former chairman of the planning board, current selectman, Ms. Larry?
Yes. If that matters, I believe if you want.
Just out of curiosity.
And I was telling everybody that you built the the dollhouse.
That's right, yes.
The Redwood.
Yeah, the Whitney House, yeah.
So how many members are on the DRB?
Uh, right now there's, yes, right now there's three.
Is this supposed to be four?
I think there can be up to, I can look at the file, but I think.
So it's two open, I'm just wondering. Oh, it's quite, it's multiple?
I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
I can try, I'm gonna grab my files.
I was just wondering, you know, I'm getting my own copy.
So the designer group is really new and there hasn't been, you know, a project in which.
Different to wait in.
Really?
That's not, although that's really true. They did work with the, uh, previous owner, the salt box, although that never came to fruition.
It was just kind of preliminary. They never came to us with a kind of.
But Frank Patterson is working on it now, so I don't know if renovations have to go through the.
No, they don't. It was when they were gonna tear it down and they wanted to go.
So renovations don't have to go through the, I mean, how drastic does a renovation have to be?
Didn't the DRB consult with, yeah, filter equity Bolton Capital?
But it's something, don't they?
I, my collection is Michelle has came in.
That's awesome.
Have you been in there?
No, I have not for years. I was in it before they renovated it.
You spare those, it's gorgeous, really, really.
I would like every building in town to look like that. It is so beautiful.
Just aside, just a side note, the EDC is having a business meeting next Wednesday morning at seven thirty and it's like an RVP. So we're trying to get like, so then the Shuba Valley Chamber of Commerce is gonna be there and, uh, you know, so the owner is gonna talk about the renovations and, you know, how it fits into Bolton and, uh, trying to get businesses together to see what can be done within the rules and regulations of the town.
Uh huh.
So, um, so if anybody's interested in going.
You remember the DRB doing kind of the full.
Next Wednesday morning at seven thirty AM.
I seem to remember Michelle, uh, coming in with, you know, something important for us, Senator, regarding Bolton Capital and the whole barn project there.
I actually toured that site last week with Pauline. We talked to Ray, the owner, and he told me that the design review board came into play at like the very end, so.
Yeah, I.
Like I know they had.
I mean, the ship was already sailing, but.
Some lighting and.
So again, you know, that's a great project, but it was like an existing barn. They did a renovation.
He did an amazing job.
And they did an amazing job, but it's not, you know, I guess what I think the DRB is waiting for and we're waiting for is, you know, a site, a bare site and starting from scratch, that whole process.
Well, the number one candidate would be what? If Clint Saban's bank goes through with the.
Right, exactly. And that should be the next one.
That would probably be the next one.
Cause it sounds like they wanna tear down what's there and start over.
Yep. And then I also got a call today from Mark Dibb, the engineer for Bolton Office Park, and they're looking to move forward with the assisted living and he said they're gonna be submitting their application to planning.
Is that?
So that's another project.
The, no, no matter whether overlay passes or not?
They're just moving forward with it. That could change, but they, he said they just need to start with something.
So is that, I guess, I'm sorry. Well, they actually have plenty of real estate in terms of lot coverage and everything. All they need to do is split off a sufficiently large chunk of the existing lot to block the assistance of living on there. So so if this is on the overlay land, would assisted living count as?
They're not doing the overlay with that. They're subdividing, I think, and they're gonna do.
So it'll be like, okay, I gotcha, yeah.
And they can do that.
They can do it with what they have already and they don't have to wait for any overlays or get with any of that.
So anyway, we are anxious to have that full process, you know, to try it out. I am, cause it hasn't really.
It hasn't happened yet.
Registered in the town, like the design review board. I think everybody has a lot of questions and I think we have to just do it.
And now we have our rules and regs in place.
Yeah, that's true.
Important. We did that tonight.
Oh, good.
Did you have any?
Do you have a copy of this?
Yeah, we give you a copy after. Since I printed them and then no one took any of them.
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess it will not be a quiz.
Oh, cool. Okay, great.
Basically, that just goes through and sets a bunch of broad yet comprehensive criteria on what we're looking for, but it can be pretty well summed up as make this look like it belongs in Bolton.
Right, like it's been here for the last hundred years.
Yeah, pretty much.
But in good shape, right. Not like it's been sitting there.
Yeah.
That's great. I'll let you on the phone.
But, yeah, you sound like a perfect, uh, person to join the, that group.
Oh, thank you, yeah. I'm excited to be asked.
If you'd spent the time to build a replica of a storage structure in town, clearly you have an interest in what represents Bolton and the looks of Bolton, so.
Six weeks to break that baby.
Thank you. Probably have an understanding of what the DRB will be looking for. I guess I have to go look at it. I guess I have to go look at the dollhouse.
It's upstairs on the edge of the kids and.
Bring the kids in there on a Thursday for storytime. They're actually cute. We only got one right now.
Yeah.
Keep working on that.
Unfortunately, now it has a big glass case over it, so it's hard to see inside of it as well as it, it was better when it was in the children's room. But the kids kept touching it and it drove the library crazy, so.
With my kid, it's probably best under glass.
I live in there. My second day was when there's some kid got a door open and got their hand in it. So I got a call, there was a brick in it. I'm like, okay, it's all right. It's okay. I glued all the doors shut. It's okay, really, it's all right. I don't mind. I don't mind if they touch it. I don't mind if they.
Do you know the house is that brick house, Catty Corner?
So that was where the Whitneys lived who stored the library. They gave the money for the library.
From Catty Corner to Bolton Orchard, there's a brick house.
Oh, that's.
Joseph's.
I didn't know that's a good.
It's like one of the, you know, big, beautiful brick houses in Bolton.
Yeah. For our chimneys, yeah. It was great. It was a dairy farm. They had a lot of acreage. And across the street in that vacant lot there, they had a butter stand where they made butter and sold it in that vacant lot, so.
Now they make donuts. They make donut better.
All year.
With the butter. They use the butter to fry the donuts. It's great. Um, so, Al, read my.
So, uh, so do we, we ought to appoint Mary right now? Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mary Delaney to the, the designer review board.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you get it. So be it. Welcome.
Thanks.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I so appreciate it very much.
Great, thank you for coming.
It's my pleasure. I got to listen to the home.
Yeah.
Now she knows she does not wanna be on planning board.
I knew that a long time ago.
That's next.
Years, years ago, I knew that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
See you all around. So I think the second thing I almost approval of minutes, but honestly, I just didn't get a chance to finish them, so we'll have to do that another time.
And so, Alan?
Yeah, um, so century mill canceled, which is unfortunate because, um, there's just a whole punch list of items that I think planning board really needs to talk to him about, um, especially moving forward with this next phase, like, for example, he's already started clearing phase four and technically he was supposed to have a pre-construction meeting, went to town and that hasn't happened yet, so things like that, it's kinda, all right, like, we need to have this communication.
Phase four is by Century Mill Road.
Want me to grab the plan so you can take a quick look or?
Driving by and seeing that, it's like, how did you put two houses, one on either side there? Have you seen?
I drove through a while ago, but before I was looking at it with the planning board eye, just kinda going through and go, oh, that's another house.
No, this is like, it's, they're busted throughout the Century Mill side.
If I remember correctly, they had to do quite a cut into the hill, a lot, a lot of digging in there.
It's just a huge sandhill there.
Okay.
A lot of trees.
That was fun to watch.
I think two hundred acres, one hundred.
So they've already gotten approval for phase two in this portion of phase four. Now he's looking to move into this phase down here.
Where's the four?
Century Mill is up here, so this is phase, this is phase one.
Oh, that's phase one.
He's looking to do work down here.
Oh, okay.
And that's another question I have for Andy is because he's taking gravel out, if you go.
That's what I'm saying.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
That, I don't, I don't really know what's going on there. Like, can you get approval from planning board to, to start working there? To get that gravel, to use it down in other portions of the, of the site? So I think those are the kind of questions we need to be asking him to stay on top of what's going on out there.
So can you ask Fred about that? Cause I.
I will.
I'd love to give you the answer, but I guess we have four phases, but then they all got broken out into little sub-phases and then it just entirely got away from my reckoning.
So where is this eighteen, nineteen and twenty?
So that's in phase two right here. It's like, I think there's like four lots left in the two initial phases and he's looking to get loan releases.
And this is your main road in through Spack Hill and that's Doug's house?
Basically.
Okay, where's James's house?
Nowhere near here. I don't know why he always recuses himself.
No, come on, it's gotta be.
Yeah, he has to use another one. Well, he had a former planning board member that had that lot, so he was recusing himself constantly. He was the one that came up with the designer review guidelines way back when, or the idea for it.
So this was wetland crossing here. Um, Fred Young, who's been doing the peer review on that and that's still open. There's been a lot of issues with the design of that culvert, so now because planning board had approved that he could move into this phase and then concert, you know, issues with conservation, he's now going through the open space. I don't know if everyone's aware of that and he's working with conservation on that issue.
So he's cutting across there. They can't put the culvert in here till July when the water table moves down.
Right.
And, yeah.
So he's using this as kind of a construction entrance or he?
Yes, exactly.
So that's not the replacement?
And that's somewhere in here is where he started to do the clearing, which, you know, I would like to have a pre-construction meeting to really kinda figure out.
So you don't care?
So this is the main road here, is that cool? Yes. There's only one entrance into this or there's a second?
Well, I think it will be here, yeah, at Century Mill. Yeah, that's the paved one, yeah.
So there will be a second entrance?
Yeah, so.
Eventually, yeah. I think this is the last phase for the same time.
Have you driven by there? Have you seen that?
Hmm, yeah.
So, yeah, if you, if you can ask.
If we don't like the Warnerford driveway and Carol.
I will find out. Carol doesn't seem to really know, cause we actually drove by there together.
I remember that discussion about grading and everything.
Yeah.
With, I think what the numbers were, but you can only have a certain rise or run.
Okay.
And basically, since it was dropping down so far, it was just like massively wide cut.
Okay.
You know, say it's twenty feet or thirty feet or whatever it is at the bottom and then it goes up and up and up, so it's like a hundred feet wide.
So that's a, I don't know, you know, that's an escher, which is like a, when the glaciers melted, they left these deposits and the ones that are like sandhills that are like snake shaped.
Yeah, like the hole house down by the dump. Or I think it was the hole house.
So that, that's what this is, I'm sure you know. I didn't realize.
Yeah, there's this big, yeah, and then.
There's lots of those in town.
Escher, an escher.
On the, you go down Sugar Road past the gaming mansion on the left, same sort of.
On the, they go down Sugar Road, past the Kami mansion on the left, same sort of thing, but it's much smaller, tons of them in town.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to like, cause if you look at this, there's a house, it looks like there's a house on both sides.
There is.
So it's, I don't even know how they're gonna do it, it's gonna be a steep driveway or a steep backyard, I don't know.
I just also wanted to refer to your attention about Sammy, I did a drive-by today with Carol, we went to look at it. And just so that you know, he's not maintaining that existing drainage system that's along the main road there. This is CME, Century Mill, so like I just took some, some quick pictures of different things that I saw. It's obviously not being maintained, like look at these catch basins, they're just compacted with so much sediment. So these are things that I need to talk to him about, but unfortunately, I can't directly talk to Andy, I have to talk through to Alan and Alan doesn't really know what's going on on site, so.
I can't see from this, so that's like the whole grid right there.
Yeah, this is the catch basin grate here.
I saw someone pour concrete into it.
Be in the subdivision, this is on Spect Hill Road.
No, this is in the subdivision right now.
So basically the leverage we have is, you know, he wants lots released, but.
But he needs to be taking care of the site.
They have to, you know, those meetings have to be implemented.
Yeah, so this is a basin.
Basically someone's lawn.
This is a, it's hard to see, but I couldn't get access to it, but this is one of the basins, but if you actually look, there's like this change in color. It looked like this is all accumulated sediment in there, so that's another thing, he needs to be cleaning out his basins.
And he's supposed to have what these covered with?
He is dumping them on the ground.
Yeah, they, he should have silk socks put into these catch basins to catch the sediment. And then when it gets to a certain depth, he's supposed to be taking it out and.
It's much easier to shovel it up on the ground level than vacuum it up on the ground.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Isn't that what they do, it's like basically a vacuum on the truck?
Yeah, yeah, they can do that, yeah.
I, I mean, he has them aligned, they're eventually gonna wanna make those a public road too, so, I mean, those are something that the town will eventually have to maintain, right?
Yes, eventually, yeah.
But this is just extra bad because they're doing all the work up there, truck and muddling the plate, so that won't be typical once they're all lived in.
Right, so, you know, depending how many years of construction, this silt base, this water retention area could like be six inches filled with, filled up. So its carrying capacity has been reduced.
Right, right.
How many lots in the subdivision, do you remember?
Seventy-two, I think.
I think it was seventy-eight.
Think that he could potentially build seventy, but I think.
Seventy-something, was it?
Yeah.
And how many are built?
So.
Uh, nine or ten.
Yeah, probably ten. Just nine or ten, that's it?
Count.
So, you know, this, you know, previous.
How do you know which ones are built?
Um, not on that plan, but.
You just count all the numbers, except all the numbers changed, so they may not, you know, if you find that X is the highest number, it's not necessarily the number of lots.
Yeah.
It's the D?
So this will just become endlessly complicated.
Endlessly complicated, and again, this is a project where a lot of waivers could be so, not just on fees, but like.
Could be, have been.
Have been many times, and it's unpleasant, and it's not just about money, it's like, hey, give us a break on cleaning up these like things, and it's like.
I mean, so if you talk.
I got three cars, give me a break in my accident.
I, I, like, you know, I was standing all, you know, all along.
I wanna try.
It seems excessive, it seemed, it seemed.
One's antique, right?
It seemed excessive, but I would be uncomfortable, you know, picking and choosing breaks.
It's hard, yes, and whether, I mean, from range are high, maybe they are, maybe they're not, but that's a different argument.
There are other towns that have other fees, like just, they have impact fees.
Sure, sure, sure.
I don't think we have like general impact fees, this would have been a great project for it, like if, if you look at Spectacle Road, I mean, there've been all sorts of issues about that just falling apart. Because of all the construction.
All the crushed culverts.
You know, so there should, there should have been some impact fees, you know, in hindsight, you know, looking forward, you know, mitigation or whatever, to go in and fix, I mean, basically that road is unchanged.
Can you assess mitigation after, my ignorance, after the permits been issued, like as the project's ongoing, not really, that's upfront, okay.
Only if there's some big change in that.
Okay, okay.
But it's just, yeah.
So in terms of just erosion control for the site, I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware, aware of the fact that the site does have a SWIP in place, its Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. Cause last week I had mentioned NIPD's Constructional General Permit and Doug looked at me like I had three heads. So I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of, you know, this is sort of a trigger point in terms of making Andy, make sure that his site is, is being maintained.
Yeah, so we want you to do, you know, you have great expertise as a civil engineer, so we want you to get involved and make sure that.
That comes under who, conservation?
That comes under conservation for storm water, so this is triggered through Mass DEP, they require a SWIP. But in general, it's through EPA, it's the Clean Water Act, and it's the NIPD's program, as state of Massachusetts participates in that program. So this is the permit, it's a general permit, this is what he would have to apply for, which he did, cause I checked online.
Oh, it's double paid?
Unfortunately, he applied for it in like two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, they came out with a new permit in two thousand and twelve. Technically, he had six months to get coverage under this new permit, he hasn't done that yet, so that's another issue that we need to talk to him about because.
So you said he's actively clearing, do we have any, would we have means to cease their work until they?
Technically, yes, if, if he was doing something that we kept telling him, no, you need to, you need to do, you know, clean the roads or whatever it is that we're having issues with or getting complaints about. If he doesn't, then the town has the right to go in and cease and desist the project until he fixes it.
So just, you know, you have our support to do what is right.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of all these things that are on the table that I'm looking at, so.
You know, the previous town plan, it would do, and, and, you know, we're not gonna go releasing lots until, you know, all the ducks are in a row.
Sure.
Cause that's the way we've had to have been.
It's a lot of dogs.
You can't just, not that part, but just like have a, you know, pre-construction meeting.
I mean, circling kind of that kind of, and with this and talking about the Warner Road driveway, I mean, I'm kinda, it's first I heard it today, is he already drilled like, what, a twenty thousand dollar well? And he didn't even like get approval for where the driveway would be and stuff, I mean, isn't like, how much that worth?
It sounds like, you know, it's hard, it's hard to know, like, who did chuck by that lot from, who drilled the well?
Yeah.
Like, it doesn't sound like he drilled the well.
Right.
I mean, yeah, that should all be part of, you know, one, one design by the engineer.
It just seems like some things are backwards and then you're saying like, you know, they're doing stuff over at CME before.
Well, one lot is really different than like these huge things, yeah, I mean.
Didn't you have Houghton Pond where they put in this beautiful road, they put up the two model houses and they have the house?
What's going on there?
Nothing, the houses look great though, absolutely nothing.
Houghton Pond is what, off Sugar?
Sugar Road.
There's two houses there, right?
Yeah, I mean, every now and then you'll see a car park, they have people hiking.
Are they overpriced?
I have no idea.
Cause they're, they're for sale, but they haven't been sold.
Yeah, but you can see that it's gonna be construction forever.
I don't think they're overpriced, I, I don't get it.
Well, I'm just, you know, cause other houses are selling that are that size or a little smaller, that other developers sell.
I think the problem is that they know I live right down the street.
Yeah, it's probably.
I'm like, oh, I don't even wanna go with the bad guy.
You take that current turn like a nod man and you can always go like a Houghton Pond.
I will not discuss my foibles on TV, thank you.
No, it's hard to figure out what's going on.
Who's the developer there?
Bob Riley. On that, also, you know, the, urban Sugar Road just passed that, that's actually part of the land for that development. I mean, they have the old house kinda in the middle and it, the land wraps around. So as part of their permit, we've got an agreement from them to basically push back the ledge several feet and kinda grieve it out a little bit. So you could see around the corner and then in theory someday, people walking down the road won't be taking their life into their hands. Cause it is horrendous to walk or buy, so the horrendous is a drive-by, I've got, you know, many feet of steel in front of me.
And now there's a new house there, right there on the other side.
And it had the lights on, but only now, tonight, when I was coming down to the meeting, have I actually seen any cars over there, so.
I'd walk down Eastern Road if I were you, there's wide open roads, okay.
Corn Road up into Harvard, wide open.
That's where the bears are.
Although, the last, uh.
Shabby bears, excited, did you see that?
Yeah, bear's a friend, but there weren't any in the last week's paper, so they must have moved on.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure they just came out.
It was a bit eerie, but no bears.
Came out of hibernation, they're hungry.
We digress.
Okay. My bird feeders down. That's what everyone's saying, okay, let's adjourn, make the vote.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.